Whenever you're ready. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City of Lake Forest our big council work session for June eight point twenty-three to order, please. Right here, motion for adoption.
Second.
The move in second is very discussion. There are none of all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any next? Yeah, I have. Thank you. Tonight, we have two topics. We have the first topic is the draft ordinance twenty-three. Twelve, six, nine, and then chapter sixteen dot forty. Even the Lake Forest Park municipal code tree canopy preservation enhancement. And then second, secondarily, we're going to have like no less important, we're gonna have. Mr. Perico is gonna be reviewing capital improvement plan for pavement resurfacing. So with that, I will hand it off to the excuse. Sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Mubal.
Thank you. As you know, I am a Sound Transit employee and most of the preordnance that's being discussed this evening has to do with order right away trees. Replanting of trees that directly affect and reference in the discussion with regard to Sound Transit. While I don't believe there is conflict of interest to avoid any appearance of a conflict, but just I will recuse myself. However, to say that when we do replant trees, they should be appropriately sized, placed, and located to take into consideration. Environment, including views that homeowners may have.
Thank you, that's what we appreciate. This is our issue listener. And with that, there's nothing to press or discussion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Of the, um, we have some, some new texts that have been highlighted in the draft through. Yellow and in response to last discussion. Uh, so. I was thinking that we could, I could just see if you have any questions about what the, the changes were, maybe ask. City Attorney Pratt to chime in as well. You know, on some, some of these were more like a kind of house, you know, cleaning up of things. But I think the first change on. Page nine of the, in the agenda document. Page five of the ordinance is one that's. We're discussing because you also have in this packet. A, a sample agreement or actual agreement between Shoreline and County Conservation District. And Sound Transit. And so this change on, uh, starting at line twenty-seven on page five of the ordinance. Is to address that, and just open the possibilities up to include. Government or nonprofit agencies such as King Conservation District to. As a means for addressing the offsite thing. So were there any? Thoughts about that or anything for that in the? I think that's a big substantive change.
All right, so. On that specific topic. You know, we're on line fifteen, page five. Thank you. That's all. It's a little fuzzy.
Could I ask for my question? It's not on the point that Director Bennett raised, but my question is on the appraisers guide for plant appraisal. Do we think that that's a? Good and, and generous enough considering we have very mature trees and it's gonna be a while before the. Replanting replanted trees grow to any substantial size. Do we think that is the absolute best guide for appraisal and value calculation or? Is there, are there any alternative guides we should be considering?
I'm not aware of any alternative. That's what our arborist uses.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, I, you know, it's more, I, it's an open question. I have no. You know, knowledge of it, but I just wanted to make sure we're using. The best thing. And is that something that's updated like every year?
Yes.
Yep, okay, okay. And it takes into account, I assume, the age and. And so forth of the tree.
But addition.
And yeah, and does it take into account? How long it takes or is there some escalator for how long it takes a replacement tree to grow? Is there some kind of adder, adder for that?
Well, you're, um, you're praising the value of the tree based on what, what it is.
Yes, but you're never gonna, but you're replacing it. You're using that money to replace it with a tree that's not, you're not gonna go out and buy a thirty-five. Forty-foot tree. So I'm trying to figure out is. I, I understand they're two separate things, but the goal is to use that money then. To purchase a replacement tree, but it isn't truly a replacement tree as well, I'm saying that, you know, and so is there? Well, anyway, you, you get my point. I'm raising a question of whether there's something.
Standard that, you know, we, we can defend our.
Yes.
Our value.
Yes, but, but we're not. I'm trying to see if it's a replacement value, but we're not using it for full replacement. So. Cause you can't do that. So our, the question is, could we go out there and buy a thirty-foot tree actually with the money, with this, this amount in the guide? You know, there's some places that sell mature trees.
There's the big trees.
The big trees organization, so.
I think what our, you know, arborists said, those, those would be the least likely to succeed without.
I understand, but how much would they cost compared to the guide? Is what I'm saying, I'm trying to raise, because to me, that's the differential that anyway.
Well, we should, you know, we should put a placeholder there because that the importance of that definition. Really depends on what you decide as far as the options you wanna give people for offsite. And so it may be something we need to revisit, uh, if it is important, but you know, if. You're depending on how many options you give the applicant, it may not even be in the play, so.
I understand. I get that. I, I was more saying to, is that really a, is that a partial or a complete valuation? Like if you. Use the same guy for the big tree organization to buy a tree, is there a big differential in price?
Just on point before council member for Tony, uh, uh, it's just speaker. You raised an interesting question. Remember the public question the other day asked. Do, is there a definition of mature tree? We referenced that once in here, and I don't know whether it's their standard. Because on points, you think about we're supposed to be replacing. We're looking at trees and, you know, it, it says that in the, whereas, for example, you know, at the end of the first paragraph, mature trees over removal. What promote potentially distant viable mature trees of removal and replacement and protect several trees. Is there a standard definition or is it?
Well, it makes sense. We, we have definitions for viable trees and significant trees. Landmark trees and, and so mature tree is, uh, the, the code. You know, kind of uses the idea of, you know, thirty years of growth as representing where it becomes a tree as the canopy. That, that is equivalent to.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. As I recall, our code says you replant something that will be at the same maturity in thirty years. So you get thirty years of growth. And I understand that you don't wanna plant a tree like that because of the, you're better off planting. You know, a young tree is gonna take off.
So you think we're okay in terms of the definition? I think so. Okay. Yeah, appreciate, uh, customer for very patient.
Thanks. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As you are bothering saying, I'm pointing to the council member's voice. I think that, yeah, you were trying to tease it out the summer piece and this is great movement to consider the biological resources in the community as part of the actual infrastructure in the same way we do roads and sewers and things like that. And the point is that what we're looking for is the loss of services of that tree for thirty years. And the question is for our director, is there a sort of an amortization schedule for this loss of services that you're aware of for things like biological resources?
Um, I, I know that the, the iTree study, you know, tries to encapsulate, you know. Figure out the value of the trees that are in the city, but I don't know that there's one that's, you know, that's sort of, you know, rigorously tested to. You know, in terms of what, uh, how, how you would. You know, recruit replacement of whatever that lost value is, you know, twenty-nine or thirty years of that mature tree is gone. And, and so, you know, what, what we're able to do, you know, I, I think, I think our, our enforcement system appraisal works pretty well to, to. You know, talk about a lot of those things, but it's not really like, you know, carbon sequestration loss.
Or ecosystem service, like, you know, which is a growing area of economics. Yeah, yeah.
Always a very boss on this topic.
I know, sorry. I think we aren't getting, we're missing something there in the thirty years. That's all.
Well, let's, let's, let's just, um, you would come back to these. I would be, this is trying to get the, the high points of what was changed and then come back to. Whatever. I'm not sure what, when we wanna, um, your other item, uh, in terms of, uh, so. What were you thinking? Six, thirty.
Yeah, that's a great question, Director Perico. But between three, what kind of timing would you like to, for your part of the presentation? I shouldn't take more than five minutes. Okay, so then Parkinson's law by the castle expanded. Time allotted to it. Um, let's try to, let's try to get through this by, you know, six, seven, five or something. I'll say if not, or there, please, out of respect for everyone.
Okay, with that in mind. If we, we, uh, there was another clar, next clarification was related to just regular right-of-way trees and. When it was just a, you know, one or two trees that's, uh. Case of property owner wanted to remove. And so we just clarified that. That the applicant either can either survey the location of tree or. Get authorization for all the surrounding property owners to. That they're okay with removing a tree. So.
You said what page line you're on?
Oh, yeah, sorry, page eleven. Uh, I was at ordinance itself, or fifteen of the, of the agenda document.
You wanna go back to ten? There's one on page ten, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
And so this was in response to kind of like, you know, the cost of that. I think the tree board commented on this too, so. Kind of go, I don't know, if you wanna track the tree board's comments about these things as well. Probably that up to you. All council members, you received a few words comments last night. Appreciate council. Sending those. Um, and so then the. The other one, you were, you were talking about the, the one and. And two, the line eighteen or one, two, or notice issue.
Yeah.
You know, wanna talk about that one?
So the right-of-way trees, when it's, it's not for corridor project, we wanted to insert a notice, notice and posting. Provision. And so we'll go, we thought it should track either a minor permit or a major permit. Depending on what facts apply to it. So if it's just one tree, it's gonna be a minor permit. If it's five or more, it's gonna hit down to a major permit. So that. That's what we inserted there.
Questions on those two changes? Please. I think the next one is really one that's, uh, they want physical discussion, which is, uh. My copy, it's on page twelve of the ordinance or sixteen of the, um, the document. And, and this is where we're hearing, you know, a. Option regarding these priorities for a replacement there. And, and then this falls under the application requirements for the right-of-way corridor project permit starts on. Well, it's basically the whole page after line nine, you have the original four option, but. One, you replant in the corridor was feasible and. Two, if that's not feasible, the, for offsite planting areas, that's not feasible. Some locations within the city, uh, other locations. And then finally, Ian Lu. And our discussions, uh, city attorney Pratt and I felt like, you know, really sounded like the council wanted to avoid the as well possible. So we offered you, um, a, an alternative where you just had two. Options. One is replant in the corridor. Or that you. You, you then there's like two options in the second, I don't, a smaller one and then two, line twenty-seven. At the applicant's option, uh, where we planted not feasible in the right-of-way corridor, we planted. With, um, direct towards those offsite. Replanting of current locations or an off-site replanting plan, uh, that corresponds with, uh. The, the idea of, um, using an outside entity like. King Conservation District to, uh, run that, that process. And one of the great things about that is. You know, you can get an independent agency to determine what the value of that replacement is. Uh, and so, uh, you know, and, and, and they're, they're gonna have that, as you see in this document, that, um. That, that work from the scope work just lays out, you know, how, how long do they take to do it? And, and, you know, they're, you know, they're, uh, signed up to do that, which is great for a small city like us. We're gonna, you know, stay on Sound Transit. And Sound Transit is not in the, um, the business really of, of doing tree replanting plans. So over a long time. So that, so, uh, I don't know if there's, um, any discussion about that or if you had what's.
One thing, the reason we put two options in there, either the, the third-party agreement. Or the offset replacing areas is because the city has to agree to that third-party agreement, how we have it defined. So it's not a sure thing and we can't leave them without an option. So that's why we gave them the other option was the replanting areas that the city chose, so.
Yes, thanks. Uh, so speaking with the voice of the, the tree board, uh, they were pretty neutral on the. Fianlu, but in terms of prioritization of areas, they really like a three-tier approach, which is in corridor. Preferred neighborhoods, the rest of the city.
It's all information. Thank you. Let's move on. All these other thoughts on this topic.
Just to, so the, the, the second pair of options, option one is. In the corridor, in the project scope, an option two. Doesn't differentiate between priority areas and the whole of the city. It's either priority areas or what we come up with as plan. Which would likely be mostly priority areas, but that gives us that sort of third option, but only if they go with. That third.
Right.
Option in the, in the, in the code. Okay. Okay, just making sure. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think. It. I think it brings the city in when it needs to be and it leaves the applicant able to do their own choices. In a way that we're not interfering with their work. I think it's appropriate balance. Between being. Too much in their work and hands off. I like this. The second.
Colleagues have thoughts, Mr. Peroni.
Uh, I think it makes sense to me. It seems pragmatic and smart. I like it. It gets the city out from. Underdoing things that it is an expert to do. And so my question is, in, in the replanting. Is there a way to take care of the view shed issue that we have heard from our citizens on?
The what?
The view shed, you know, the, the view like, so, so, uh, tree type. That, that is, you know, native and fits all our priorities, but isn't, doesn't have the, the mature height that would, um, result in. Future block views. So I don't know how to, to, I thread this and I don't know how to. Slide it in in a kind of gentle way. Because it's part of, it should be part of the consideration is what, is what I'm saying. I think it makes sense. There could also be a situation where someone has, I just walked by, uh, Burke Hillman, someone's house, and there's a big sign saying, we have new solar panels on our roof. And there could also be a solar. Issue, you know, down the road. Not now. I don't think we've had any conflicts with trees and solar, but there could be down the road, so.
You know, I, I, I appreciate what some councilbody is saying, and I wondered if. I, I also like the, what's highlighted in yellow. To say what that is, but I like it. But in that first section, could you add some language? Means the applicant has or will obtain. The private property owner's permission and approval of tree type. Or in the case of the. Could you add that?
And you're, or do I have to get permission from my neighbors?
I don't see how that's possible. Well, but the person, whose property it is. Seems like that would be reasonable, that they could have some choice between.
One of the comments is for the median. You know. Yeah, okay, okay. Feasible as they have to get the private property owner's permission. If I'm the private property owner, I'm not gonna give you permission unless I get to the tree.
Oh, okay. So you, you think it's in there?
It's covered.
Yeah, all right. That's really good. But now my neighbor. Well, no, I'm, I'm, I can't worry about neighbors because that's just going too far, but I can, because we are the city. Policy makers, they can't talk about the choices the city makes, right?
Yeah.
So then the next sentence is the city's permission to replant. And, um. I don't know how we might state that, but is, would it be possible to say? We plant. Trees of like height or something as to what was removed?
I was just gonna say, Councilor Vody admissions before, and I forgot about this, although I sort of remember it, especially because I've been on the Bergum a lot, running and walking and. The code relative to the Bergman Trail, and Steve, I can't remember, and this goes back to two thousand and seven, I think, maybe, but there was. Definitely something that we figured out how to incorporate in the code, um, about. Height relative to those trees because they were moving some certain kind of sort of non-native trees and straightening some things and then. As Councilor Vody said, near, um, areas where there would be a view completely blocked, uh, for a whole neighborhood. Those trees really haven't, they've grown up, but they've stopped. It's just sort of where they are. So I don't know. If you recall, I mean, again, I don't look at the spot, right?
Well. Regulations at the time and, I, you know, I think the way that you handle that, it's just like, you're working with, with the county. Saying, this is, this is probably, you know, you need sensitive views in this area. There's a whole, you know, stretch of that. Large. Um, and so, so I think, you know, that, you know, uh, some, some guidance language, which where we're looking right now is, is probably, um. A way to address it, uh, for, for this project, but it, you know, it might be that we want to just, um. Would also look at the other place where we described what the, um, city needs to find it to grant this permit. There's a. Right-of-way corridor replacement plan that will result in replacement of tree canopy in a manner that's, you know, conducive to the, you know, the neighborhood. Situation in that neighborhood, taking that neighborhood. Whatever, uh, character.
I do. It's pretty vague.
Yeah.
And it gives the city a lot of. Authority to make decisions that, you know, maybe. Someone might argue aren't. Based on fact.
Is. Is there anything that governs trees planted in the right-of-way, for instance, under power lines so that they should be appropriate for that, you know, situation? Do we have anything that speaks to that at all, or do you not have anything that?
Well, we, we still need to develop a street tree list and, uh, trees. So the arborist has, uh, you know, some ability to just. To amend that administratively to the code. So that might be another way to, to say that, you know, that, there's, uh, you know, in these areas. Or, or that, you know, that, uh, that, that. Tree should be selected from this list in court.
Yeah, in, in right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I like both of those ideas. I think those are both pretty good.
Yes, thanks. There's something that's confusing me about the yellow text. So let's say hypothetically. We, that applicant has contracted with King Conservation District and they need to replace two hundred and fifty trees. Let's say they can only get two hundred trees in the corridor and the priority neighborhoods. What does the yellow text say about the remaining pictures?
That they, um, whatever that canopy is, that's where, um, we're gonna. The canopy has not been accounted for in those, those first two options. There needs to be agreement, uh, with this, uh, third party to plant, uh, trees that will add up to that canopy based on, you know, the city's thirty-year.
But still, so, okay, that's a cap. So let's say the applicant needs twenty thousand square feet of canopy. And they could only fit fifteen thousand square feet of canopy in the corridor. And priority neighborhoods. Where do they plant the remaining five thousand square feet of canopy?
The, um, the agreement that we have from Shoreline says they would work with the city on planting the home city-owned property. So we could add something, make that a specific requirement?
That's my hesitation to not really like the yellow version because the feedback from the tree board is they, they really want to open it up. If we've exhausted the priority areas, they would like to open it up to the rest of the city because there are lots that have low canopy coverage that might not be in a priority neighborhood.
They don't, I mean, this wouldn't limit. Them to the priority areas. We could, in the agreement, tell the Conservation District to limit it there, but it, it doesn't right now.
I, I, I'm still hesitant because again, the feedback from the tree board, they like having three clear tiers.
They don't like just handing it over. My understanding is they wouldn't want to just hand it over to a third party. To plant where they think the trees should go or where they can get agreement on where the trees should go. They want that third party to concentrate on. These certain areas.
Yes.
Got it. So then if you're, I have a question. Um, so if you're a homeowner and you want to plant. A tree, could you go to this group and say, hey, my property's available? Under this or, 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 I mean, I think we have the flexibility and the plan to have a program like that, but is that something the tree board? Would like, or in that case, they?
Yes, they were very concerned about equity though, and that they were very concerned about prioritizing neighborhoods that have historically low tree canopy.
Yeah, but then in there, we could put it in code or we can just. It, it says the city has to agree to that third-party agreement and that would be one of our, you know, terms upfront is. King County Conservation District, we need them planted in these areas in these things. That's where it's already.
I have a question. So. So we actually would have a contract with the King County Conservation. And the contract would specify what our desires are as a city for how they have for this project, right?
Yes, uh, and I think we should lay it out as much as we want to in the code, but when, when Steve and I did this draft. You know, we didn't have much to define it, but we could add things in there like that. It is defined very.
A question about the term offsite replanting, uh, recommended in this chat. It is maybe the properties that the city owns are, have. Unfortunately, they're, they're sort of neglected or have invasive species, have various channelages there. Would that? The way this is written, would that preclude sort of a restoration, so those trees could be planted, or is it strictly? The restoration would have to be separate and then it's just sort of plonked in the ground and go?
I don't think there's anything prohibiting, you know, um, doing things to make sure the trees succeed.
Okay.
Okay, there's anything that, uh, this, this agreement also, uh, you know, the, the scope says that the. Project should be on people, family, properties and city. Uh, so, so it, you know, that, that gives them the ability to, to look for, um, locations that we may not have thought of.
Thank you for that.
I, I don't think you would want to know, like, pick a city site where you'd say, okay, we want to you to do this five thousand dollars with the restoration and then.
Sure.
I was thinking, for example, to. I was thinking, for example, to Councilman Goldman's, you know, comments about equity, we do have, the same does. On properties in places where there aren't tree canopy is not necessarily. It's much, much less than it is in the other parts of the community. The only issue is some of those city properties have any additional. You know, it's invasors have taken over, or it's sort of, you know, you get these maples that are. You know.
Yeah, exactly. K C D does work like that already. So it could be that there'd be some, you know, synergy between projects that are using our K C D money for. We probably need to keep the the goal, the main thing, which is planting trees.
Right, right.
I think K C D had like twenty seven thousand dollars in the shoreline agreement that they could add.
Okay.
They stopped it.
Okay.
Right, right.
So there could be something that's a little bit offset to help get ready and then report not exclusively. Thank you.
And this this goes, I'm circling back now to Councilmember Bodie's. Earlier comments about what value, how we value things, right? So. Purchasing a young tree does not cost as much as I think as the value that's put on the tree. But part of what you have to do to make sure that young tree will survive and thrive is to ensure that the. The environment in which you plant it is healthy, right? So it seems like there's a very logical and. Rational way to say that. The planting of the tree is more than just the purchase and sticking it in the ground. It's also the preparing the area to make sure that that tree is going to survive and thrive.
Absolutely.
I there has to be something our arborist knows of that's like tree amendment, you know. Processes that we can refer to, or how how to prepare the soil, the hole, how big the hole has to be. You know, there's 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 ways that, there's details for that that exist. There's got to be something that. Our arborist knows about that we can reference that guidelines in here. It's maybe not for our private, you know, we can we can suggest it for our private owners' tree replacements, but for these utility. Right-of-way permits, I think we can require them to follow a minimum standard of that. And then you'll get the right-sized hole, you'll get the amendments, you might even get those water bags that will keep it. Hydrated and protected from from dry spells. Like what we would do if we were to plant a tree.
We did run by the city arborist, this language about. So feasible includes with conditions conducive to growth of a viable tree. So she's going to require. The hole that's big enough, the tree that the.
But also maybe the clearing of the ivy and blackberries within a certain number of feet of way.
She might, she might do that, and I would think that if it got too expensive to certain spot. King County Conservation District or Sound Transit would say, we're gonna go find something ourselves. But I don't know.
I would just say, they've got just a couple of minutes before we can move on, but I would say that. Because I think you mentioned a site before, to take a look, there's the city owns double acres that are unheralded. Just to the. Gosh, I guess it's west of Thirty-Fifth on Ballenger Way, right near the kids, that, what's it called? Whiskers, thank you. Let's say kids whisk. The, yeah, just like one parcel off of that. The city owns multiple parcels right there on Ballenger Way. And if you take a look at what it really needs some serious work. And 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 celebration. And so that's the kind of thing that the lens I've been looking at it through. We also own properties on one seventy-eight. Twenty-eight other places that again, most of the community guys know, the owners, and so that they're celebrated. And that's where I'd love to see, particularly in places like on Ballenger Way, where the tree canopy has really been renewed. Some some additional trees.
Two very quick comments. One, the Shoreline Historic Museum is going to have a test site for a Milwaukee. Style reforestation, which is a high-density reforestation versus the, what we normally plant is we'll plant the trees apart so that they can all survive. This is you plant them in densities that they fight for survival, and you expect fifty percent of them to not make it because they. The competition apparently works really well for establishing trees quickly. So. I I want to, I want us to keep an eye on that exploration project that they're doing there and consider our code, I don't think would. Value that because we have a tree canopy. So we put all those trees together, they don't get counted. Any more than one tree would. So what developer would do that? But I think it's a really interesting idea. And two, I just wanted to go back. I apologize for being late, but briefly to page six, when we talk about that. Two thousand feet. And in my mind, I started to realize that we may have, we have right-of-way that is near other municipalities as well. So I would consider that we include Lake Washington or an adjacent municipality as a reason to push the two thousand square feet. Or sorry, the two thousand linear fee, you know, offset. Yeah, so that that two thousand. Linear fee fall squarely and build a lake forest park.
I think I think we gotta tweak.
Yeah, we added at the beginning within the jurisdiction of the city.
Yeah.
But I guess that wouldn't be simple enough to say that that's thousand feet, nine million.
Just real quickly.
Yeah, I just want to flag one more comment and question from the tree board. The comment about the width, the tree board pretty unanimously felt a thousand feet is too wide. And they would like to see it cut to five hundred feet on each side. And then the question they had, when a tree is planted in private property. How is that maintained? And that who's responsible for checking all the trees? The homeowner or is it King Conservation District?
It's going to be either the applicant through their replanting plan or K C D.
So there's someone basically have, like, the homeowner would have to basically say, okay, you can come onto my backyard every few months.
They talked a lot about education and explaining to the homeowner what they need to do. To maintain the tree.
Okay.
Ideas in that agreement, at the very end in the scope, it talks about. How they would want the owners to maintain trees. Not that we have to follow that exact model, and they have learned some disagreement that was what twenty eighteen. But that is what they have in there, you know, see how it works too.
Either came to think that through the changes that you were helping to.
So are you ready for, I mean, where next? Public hearing? No, you want to move this along.
Yeah, colleagues, I would recommend to given circumstances, particularly that will be recently had, but it's even that we consider. Setting public during time for this as possible.
Yeah, and so if I could just summarize my own thoughts on this. I don't want to lose the good map of our low canopy neighborhoods. And I hope that that will be included in any agreement we would have with. In Kai Conservation Corps, which I'm approving of that concept. And I agree with the tree board that I think the sound and feed each side is is a little excessive. Now, I. Yeah, it's hard to visualize very easily, but I I'm thinking.
I would also recommend that if we can get an updated plan that doesn't include the specific right-of-way projects, but. Recognize if that's a fifth area. Do you understand what I'm saying for the for the map? Because right now we have areas one, two, three, four as under lower canopy areas. We also have lower canopy areas that are within sort of the the Boffa Way corridor. But if we're going to be using this for all right-of-way projects. I think we want to ask the tree board if we should identify that as a specific fifth area. If a project is not on Boffa Way, that that would be accessible for planting. Do you see what I'm trying to say?
No, I think we told them just give us the low areas. We didn't specify Boffa Way.
So I guess my question is to confirm that this low area here isn't intended to be up to the area. Do you know that?
So the tree board, they kind of drafted this assuming the Sound Transit project.
Yeah.
So they did not include anything along five twenty-two as a box five on the assumption that, oh, that's in corridor. But I agree with Councilmember Riddle that if, let's say, we're looking at the Roundabout project at one oh four. If trees are removed from there, then Boffa Way would be a viable neighborhood priority zone. So I I think.
Fair enough. Okay, now I get it. One of the professors in the room. Thank you, Larry. Colleagues, I'm afraid we have to move on out of courtesy to. Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett.
For hearing later.
I would say, colleagues, that we, why don't we do it concurrently with the twenty-second? Here. I think it's not unreasonable. Unless unless you have concerns about.
Can we get some edits back then based on today's discussion before that?
I believe so, and it's up to our. I didn't see her.
I know they will be in the packet, which we have to get out. So the.
A week from Friday.
It's the. Twenty second.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
A review is today.
Today. As soon as we can.
I'm just interested in the appropriate truth by English language, and so, yeah.
We'll try and. However you come up with that. We'll try and draft the public hearing notice so that we're giving the public broad. Sort of wide range of things, you know. Tree height in the right of way.
Top.
Okay, thank you.
So let's bookmark it for the twenty-second, and when you have a sidebar, that's how you do that. Yeah, thank you both very much. Great discussion, everybody. Rick Roberto, thank you for waiting patiently. I can move over.
Three minutes.
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
Everybody. So on Monday earlier this week, I sent out a memo kind of updating where we are with the C F P savings. And with that, kind of identifying that we are not able to have the. ACI values as well as all assessment completed in time for. They request their, and the memo identifies a big quest service in January, file list in March. And they won't forbid in June. So our timeframe between being asked back in the fall during budget season to get all that work done. President's plan to stay to understand that they were asked that early. So there's there's no way that we can do that. First of all, when you pay them to be dry and free leaves and everything else, and that didn't matter just three weeks ago. So what I'm asking to do is that on our preliminary list last year, we submitted a handful of two cover. Close to two layers based on the bid numbers. So we did some work last year, and that was like that, I think, the barriers that we did. So what I'm looking for is the balance of last year's list to be this year's list. Which we feel is, it should be enough to, enough funding to cover that. And then what we would do the next several months is do, I use any assessment of sixty-two. City locations, priority locations, and then come back to you in the fall with. A list of streets based on these different parameters. Colleagues, questions?
I'll just express disappointment. I don't think these streets represent the I F D. With two elementary schools in Lake Forest Park and the last paving study done in twenty thirteen. I I am not in favor of just moving forward with what I think is a flawed program. And I say it's flawed because we don't really have a plan that addresses mobility in Lake Forest Park. I don't think these represent the street, it's the greatest need, either because of proximity to highway schools or pavement condition. And the idea of just proceeding because that's what we have, I think sends a wrong message that says, you know, it's okay not to do. What we set out to do, which is truly improve mobility for the citizens of Lake Forest Park. I'm not in favor of proceeding with what I think is a flawed program.
Councilman, colleagues, some other thoughts, Mr. Curdery.
And I concur with Councilmember Debo. A lot of the streets that are being done, that worked on are dead ends. And I, no insult to the folks who live on those streets, I'm sure that the street division of other houses is concerned. But again, echoing Councilmember Lebo's comment, you know, the greatest, it's good for the greatest number. We might be able to be resource better.
We had this discussion a year ago, and I thought we were going to do. Not, you know, completely exhaustive, but kind of a step back and quick and dirty. You know, more cursory, I guess, would be a better way to say it. Priority list so that we actually could have the conversation that Councilmember Lebo was suggesting. And I realize that there's a lot of director paragons played, but I I also have some concerns about just keeping the camp. I I I think that. This came as a surprise when I saw the email because of our discussion in here.
What's any other thoughts?
I would like a little bit more information about a couple of things. So. The budgets for this. Is our own money. It's not King County money, right? And so if we don't spend it this year, it's can be rolled into the next year, right? That's correct. We don't lose it or anything like that. Okay, all right. So that's, that's, you know, I I've got the practical hat on here. And. So. Director Parago, I understand that you've been short-stopped for. A number of reasons. One is that that we have an open position, and the other is that we have somebody who's on leave. For another month yet. But in your mind, as you think forward. Do you believe that you can have the kind of plan before the council? In time for us to make some budget decisions, some mid mid-by-level decisions this this fall? So. If we don't move forward with the streets that you indicated here, do we have? Do we have appropriate tasks and work for, who would be doing this work? We did it, our own people or? They bring in King County. So so we're not worried about people not having things to do. That's not a problem.
No, that is not a problem. However, we do twice the work next year, then. Put strain on our staff, our crews to be out there doing twice the front of the buck.
Oh, because our crews do the preparation works. Okay.
Also being pragmatic, if we pass on repaving this year and say we want to do twice as much next year. Do we think King County is going to go along with it, or are they going to say, well, they have their own capacity constraints? And effectively be lost, like instead of doing like five and five, we're we're going to get five miles next year. We're not going to get the bonus.
That's correct.
So in a sense, even if it's our money, it is still sort of a user or loser situation potentially.
I'm disappointed we couldn't get there. I also understand why, and I do believe firmly that we do need to have that greater plan. And I I would also like to have that by this biennial, a discussion, a budget discussion. I am thinking there were a lot of comments about Thirty-Fifth and how it was done, but there was also a lot of comments of why it stopped where it did. And so in my mind, I think perhaps completing that road, because we did hear from our constituents that it seems awkward where it was stopped. And that there was more work to be done. I think maybe we take on at least some of this work. Again, worried about overcapacity of King County next year, but maybe we don't do all of it. I think maybe that there's a blended approach to this year. Let's take a smaller, more focused approach so that we can treat it as a bigger issue next year.
Sorry, I've run construction programs for thirty-five years, and King County is not going to be constrained because we asked them to do. Five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars worth of paving next year, given the scale of work that they have to manage. It's a drop in the bucket. And I would not want to say just because we have this in front of us, that if we don't proceed this year, that somehow we're in a detrimental position. Next year, paving cul-de-sacs when we don't have safe. Pedestrian access to our two elementary schools in this city just does not seem like a good use of our money. How can we say to our citizens, we're paving your cul-de-sac, but we don't have safe passageways for our children to our schools? Passageways for our children to our schools, which we've all known as city council members for as long as we've been council and citizen of this city.
I would suggest colleagues that I think uh with out of respect for Director Parago, I think we should bring this back. Um, so it makes more of a part of the discussion. Not your fault. We've actually given it about twelve minutes now, but uh but I think we should bring, I think we should bring this back, colleagues, and have a a little bit more of a conversation. And think about some solutions to recommend. Mr. Lebo has recommended and there are some thoughts, if that's enough for members like that, that's yeah, thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh, we're adjourned to move upstairs. We just got a few minutes and.